Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, the roll call shows, I believe, four supervisors, four supervisors not present?
Three.
Three. Okay, three supervisors not present. We do have a quorum. Item four is the approval of the agenda.
Our moves?
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussions, questions? Okay, all in favor of approval? When the screen changes, you can press your green button. For approval, red for... Okay. Supervisor Sidlitz?
Oh, I have a question, sorry about that. It must have been registered.
Thank you. I can release. Okay, the agenda is approved. Item five is members of the public wishing to be heard. Looks like we have none. Item six is the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Later, so moves?
Second, Bertrand.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions on this? Need the items here? Okay. And all in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by pushing your green button for yes. Red for no. Consent agenda is approved. Item seven are reports. A is the county administrator review and update. Internal control review by Sickich of the Public Health and Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Randy Schultz, I'm the county administrator. I'm going to have Lori come up and actually give the presentations, but I just wanted to take this time to thank Lori and her staff for all the work they put into these forensic audits. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of work in our regular audits, so really appreciate all the work they're doing and you'll see from the results of this audit with the other ones that they're doing a great job, so.
All right. So, in late 2018, Randy attended a training and learned of the service for a forensic or an internal review by Sickich. And due to what was happening in neighboring counties, he wanted to look into that further to make sure that we were in good standing also. And so then, he ended up having Sickich film. So, first of all, I just want to get it out of the way. In the services that Sickich is providing for Chippewa County, so whether it's a forensic review or an internal control review, those terms can be used interchangeably. They're doing the same function. So, for example, when we are talking about looking at these reviews, I'll just give you an example about accounts payable. So Sickich was given access to all of our checks for entries in those departments that they've reviewed. And they'll look for the documentation of the check, and usually there's other documentation in that scan also that would include like an invoice. We want to make sure on that invoice that it has a proper authorization, a sign off by a department head, it has account numbers that are in there, et cetera. And then when Sickich is looking at that invoice to make sure that it's in compliant with the purchasing policy, the reason we have the purchasing policy is in order to do a lot of our grants that we have, we have to follow those federal guidelines. And when they compare that to what they learned in all of their little interviews with all the employees, they want to make sure that we're following the proper protocols of what we're supposed to do with proper authorizations. And I want you to remember that these reviews are done in addition to our annual audit with Clifton Larson Allen. So, the first review that we had done was in early 2019. They focused on the central finance area with accounts payable, P card, and other payroll processes. You know, like, all the staff were interviewed, and also they looked at a variety of transactions. They looked in accounts payable. Oh, I'm sorry, accounts payable was really a big focus that they looked in. And after that review, they had come up with some recommendations, and you'll see we actually implemented two of their recommendations, because remember, these are only recommendations. If we lived in a perfect world, we could recommend every, do every one of the recommendations. So the first one we did implement was a positive pay file. So what that is, it's a file that we send to the bank to show the check number and how much the check should clear for, because we don't want a check to, if we have a check for $1,000, we don't want it cleared for $10,000. Because that happens frequently in, for banks. And the last item that we did is the purchasing of gift cards for requiring a distribution list. So, we do have some departments that utilize gift cards to enhance participation in their program, so that's why we want to make sure that staff aren't getting them, that they're for the actual participant signs the form. So the next time we had one of these reviews was in 2021, and this time, it was focused in the Human Services Department and the Land Conservation Department. And like the last review, they reviewed all those financial areas. And these were the recommendations that they came back with from Sickich from that review. The one that we really implemented was the hotline, so that was implemented in January of 2023. So now it leads us to the latest review that we've done. We've done one in this year. We did the Public Health and the Sheriff's Department. And just a little information about these reviews, when they're reviewing, they're actually usually reviewing at least two full years of information, and then plus like usually a quarter or a half a year. So, for the Sheriff's Department, Public Health, they actually reviewed 2022, 23, and the first quarter of 2024. And I think the Sheriff's Department had like over 6,500 transactions, and they took a sample of some of those transactions to review to make sure all the processes were reviewed from a accounts payable standpoint. And they came up with this list of recommendations, and one of these recommendations that we are working on in our finance area is we want to make sure that all of our instructions are updated regularly, and actually showing the date that they're updated, because that was one of the things that they had talked about in the report, and I think that that is a good way for us to make sure that everything is as up to date as possible. So before we could implement that fraud hotline from the 2021 review, we actually had to do training, because we can't implement something if the employees don't know what they're going to learn about. So fraud training was kicked off by the county board meeting in May of 2022, and the link is right there if you're, if you ever want to watch it. And then in January of 2023, we assigned all the employees videos which Sickich had prepared, and those videos explained to employees like looking at other coworkers and what kind of behaviors to see, or managers and what kind of behaviors that employees would usually show. So then, next, we implemented the fraud hotline. Currently, we are contracted with Lighthouse Services LLC. We're paying about $1,300 a year for the service. And the reason why we do have a third party who's doing this is that typically if there is something going on that an employee wants to talk about, they're usually a little hesitant to come to the county management and complain about it, you know, because they're very worried about repercussions or such. So, we want to make sure that they have tools available to be able to file a report if needed. And good news, we haven't had one yet. And so, in summary, based on these reviews, that Chippewa County, we've got really good processes in place, but we always need to be looking for improvements. So you're going to see, we're going to keep doing different things to try to, not to catch people, but we want to make sure to dissuade employees from wanting to do this, having any of these, you know, having that temptation to try something. And that is the rest, if. Is there any questions?
Some more questions for Lori?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much for your, doing your department's work on this. Item B, general reports. The 2023 audit report, April Anderson from Clifton Larson Allen.
Sorry, I guess I'm going to do this one too. I want to introduce April Anderson. She's a principal at Clifton Larson Allen. I have to tell you, she's been with us for a long time at Clifton Larson Allen, so, you know, it's really good that she's still here to be able to help us to learn, review our financial information, and so she knows a lot of what we have done in the past, and so she has a lot of history with us. And here's the 2023 report that April reviewed.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. So, as she said, we have worked with the county for quite a few years now, and what I will go over today is not the full audit report that is available to you, but it's called the executive audit summary that we pull out the key pieces of information that we feel are necessary for you to know as the governing body of the county. So here, on this first page of the executive audit summary for 2023, you'll see that our audit opinion is an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. And so that is the highest opinion that you can receive, and that's what you're striving for, obviously. So that means that your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and the governmental accounting standards that you have to follow as a governing body. So yes, again, kind of what Randy said, hats off to Lori and her team, and your financial teams around the county that are working hard to get the information in and process properly. As we do go through the audit, we are required to report any internal control issues that we find, and there weren't any to report this year. So as you said, you've taken some key steps in the last few years to have those assessments done, to make the improvements in places. That's not to say that error or fraud cannot occur, but overall, your controls are, there are good controls in place for the county. And then the last paragraph here is for the compliance and internal controls over compliance. And what that relates to is, the county gets a significant amount of money, federal and grant fund, and state grant funding, and so we also perform what's called a single audit for that grant funding that's required. And we do not have, we do not have any issues or findings to report on the testing that we did for those either. So overall, the results of the audit are what you're striving for and want to hear for the year. So now we will go down a few pages and get into, this is just kind of all of that stuff that I just highlighted, but in more, more detail though. So we'll get into the numbers then, right here, as far as how 2023 played out for the county. So this first page is your general fund, so your main operating fund of the county. And we do show four years of information, so you can kind of see how things have changed over the last few years, any trends that we should be looking at. I won't go over every line item here, but focus on some of the key financial benchmarks that we look at. And so we start with the assets there, and then there's your liabilities, and the net of that is your fund balance. One thing to note, your cash and investments line, it was down quite a bit last year, but now it's leveled off. And that was, there was a decline in the market last year, so some of your investments had a decrease in value at the end of '22, but now that's bounced back in '23, and so your, your value is back up to where it had been historically before that. But as I said, what we do focus on then otherwise, that was the one big change from '22 to '23, is that fund balance section. So if you can scroll just a little bit down then. So your fund balance, as I said, is the, the net of your assets less your liabilities, or what you kind of have available as funding. And so you'll see there that your fund balance increased from last year to this year by the 1.8 million. And that kind of falls back to that investment value and the decline last year that you saw, but that bounced back in 2023. And so that was the, a main point of why your net, your change in fund balance increased by that 1.8 million. What we do look at, though, in fund balance, you'll see that there's different categories there. There's a non-spendable, an assigned fund balance, and then unassigned fund balance. So the non-spendable is assets that you have on your balance sheet that aren't really available or in a spendable form. And so that's the delinquent taxes that aren't available in the near term to be used, and then some prepaid items. So that's cash that's gone out that is not available to use at all anymore. And so then, the next item is the assigned fund balance at 8.4 million. And so what that relates to are specific items that the county has identified to utilize some of that funding available in the future. And so what makes up some of that 8.4 million in fund balance, some of the bigger amounts, is you've set aside about a million for facilities projects, 750,000 for security plan, there's 690,000 for sheriff's department equipment, and then one of the other big ones is unfunded benefit liabilities, 1.4 million that you've set aside. And so that's, again, for future costs that you're expecting to have, that you're setting that fund, that funding away for. So then, what remains is that unassigned fund balance. So that's what's considered really available, and you'll see that that increased from that 12 million to the 14 million in the current year. And what we compare that to is, that you'll see that percentage there kind of in the middle, the percent of unassigned fund balance to your general expenditures. And so, the general recommendation for that percentage is about 25 to 33%, and that's the policy for the county as well. And I know that as you've gone through bond, your bonding agency, over time, they've, they'd like to see that more closer to the 35 to 40%. And so you'll see in 2023, you were at 36.2%. So, right in that range where you, you have been between the 30 and 40%, and right where you'd like to be. And so that gives you enough funding set aside for those particular purposes, and the unknowns that might occur, that you'll have expenditures in the future that you may not be able to budget for or know will occur. And so that provides you a little flexibility there at a good level. So that is the overall results for the general main operating fund. And so then we'll just take a little key peek at the rest of your funds. So item number two is your special revenue funds here, and so these are self-sustaining funds where you have certain funding coming in, grant funding or something else to be used for a particular purpose. And so I'm not going to go over every single fund that you have here, but just hit on a couple of the bigger ones or ones that may have changed a little bit from the prior year. So Human Services obviously has a lot of activity going through that fund for those programs that you're providing, and you'll see that in last, from last year to this year, it did increase a bit. And I know that the general fund, you provided $750,000 over there to help, help pay for those programs and allow for that funding to be there for the future programming that you have for those services. The next fund that, I'd like to hit on, the second one, is that county sales tax fund. So you'll see there that that went up from 14 million to 16 million. And that funding is, you had about 8.5 million in revenue coming into that fund for the year in county sales tax, and then you transferred 6.9 million out. And with that transfer, you helped to alleviate a little bit of the property tax, your property tax pays of 1.5 million. You had a transfer of 1.8 million to pay for some of your debt service, and then you also transferred 1.6 million over for highway activities and projects there. So, again, you're, that's where the county sales tax, but you utilize that funding for the various projects and activities that you have going on. Then, the other couple that I wanted to hit on are down further a little bit. You have the American Rescue Plan Act, and so that's obviously a new one in the last couple of years with that funding that came in in '21 and '22. And the county received overall 12.5 million, and you have about 5 million that's unspent in that fund at the end of '23. And so, you'll see that the balance in there is only $477,000, but that's just the interest income and that sort of stuff that is recognized already, but you have 5 million left to be spent and recognized in 2024, or you can obligate it through 2026. And then the, the last one, you'll see the opioid settlement, so that was new last year, and where you're receiving some of that settlement funding coming in, and supposed to be coming in then for the next 15 years or so. So those are your special revenue funds. The other couple types of funds that you have are capital projects funds, and so these do fluctuate quite heavily from year to year, because it's usually where you're issuing debt, then paying for certain capital projects and equipment purposes. And so last year, you had 3 million in debt issued, and then that was spent down in 2023, so there's no balances there. Item number four is your debt service funds, and so those are for that particular purpose of either transferring or levying, funding in to pay for your current principal and interest payments. And so out of this fund, these funds in 2023, you paid 1.59 million on your debt principal, and 320,000 in that interest. And as I had mentioned before, that was covered by that county sales tax funding that came in. So, so not tax levy necessarily. Then, item number five is the enterprise funds. And so you just report one enterprise fund. So this is more like a business-type fund where you had funding coming in to, to pay for this farmland development, funding coming in to pay for that development out in that area. Over the last couple of years, you, you had a few bigger sales out there, and so you'll see the, the net position the last couple of years had increased quite a bit. And then now, it was kind of even a few more expenditures than revenues in 2023 for that activity out there. Then the last type of fund that's reported for the county are your internal service funds. And so they mainly deal with financing of goods and services within the county or for local governmental entities. And so the first one, and the bigger one that you have, is the Highway Department. And so here, we do show a little bit more of the information on the balance sheet and the results of the Highway Department, but again, I won't go over every item. One thing that might look weird here is that restricted asset, and then we have liabilities, and then in the fund balance, there's restrictions that relate to the, your participation in the Wisconsin retirement system. And so that's just kind of a goofy accounting standard that changed from an asset last year and in the prior years to a liability this year. So, don't want to get into the technicalities of that, but just wanted to, to point it out if, if you noticed the change there. But what we will focus on here is really that change in net position at the bottom, and that your revenues exceeded your expenditures this year by that 1.6 million dollars. And so again, you were able to bring in that funding that you needed to pay for those projects and complete those projects that you want for, for the Highway Department. A benchmark that we do look at here, I don't have it summarized here, but is the current ratio, and that's your current assets compared to your current liabilities. So you want to, at least a one-to-one ratio, and that's kind of your liquidity in this fund. And so the, over the last four years, the county's current ratio has ranged from four to five, or four to six, actually, and in '23, it was 5.8. So obviously, you have enough current assets, available cash, and that sort of thing to pay for your current liabilities. So that's a strong result for that fund. And then the next few that you have are related to insurance-type things, so your self-funded workers' comp. And so here, generally, you'll see that the net position is at the, a million dollars at the end of the year, and so that's kind of your county policy is to have it around that, around that $1 million mark. Last year, it had gone down, and that was transferred over to cover it in the current year to get it back to that $1 million amount. Then the next one is your self-funded health insurance, and so this was, well, in 2021, you started funding that to start that self-funding back in '22. And so you'll see that you've had positive results there as far as being able to bring that funding over and not having claims greater than the revenues that you have coming in there. So, positive change in that position for the last three years then with that activity. And then the self-funded liability insurance fund, over the last few years, that had decreased and the expenditures had exceeded the revenues, but this year, that was brought back up a little bit to provide some funding over there for that particular activity, for the self-funded liability insurance. And then the very last one is your flexible benefits fund, and so this generally has a pretty small change in net position here, and so you'll see that you're putting about $6,000 over there annually, transferring that over to help maintain the activities in this fund. So those are all the different funds and reporting for the county. The last thing that we like to focus on or share are just the long-term obligations of the county that you have outstanding at the end of the year. And so here, you'll see that your general obligation debt is at 8.4 million outstanding at the end of the year. And so, again, I mentioned that last year, you issued 3 million, so now you didn't issue anything new in '23. And so what, every county, municipality, school district, and the state has a debt limit, a general obligation debt limit. For counties, it's 5% of the equalized value that's within the county, and so that 8.4 million is utilizing 1.9% of what your overall debt capacity could be. And the, the average for the counties that we work with in Northwest Wisconsin ranges from 0 to 20%, kind of, you know, if somebody might have a big capital project going on, they might get closer to that 20%, but you'll see that you've kept it relatively low there, so you do have some capacity there if need be, but you're at a really good level there at only the 1.9% utilization of that. And then there's the other liabilities. You'll have subscription liabilities and lease liabilities that are due to new accounting standards, again. And so, just like to focus then on that vested employee benefits. So those are vacation PTO-type benefits that your employees have earned at this point in time at 123123 to be paid out into the future when they take those, and so you'll see that you have about 2.7 million there that has been earned. And if you recall, you do have 1.4, 1.5 million set aside in your general fund as those benefits are being taken. So if everybody took them all at once, you would, you would have that funding set aside to be able to help offset that expenditure. So, as I said, these are kind of the key pieces of information that we feel are good for you guys to know as the governing body, and I guess, I don't know if you need to open it up for questions? You want to add anything?
Any questions for April?
One, one good comment. On page 30, it lists the governing body as of 15. We're actually at 21 now.
Okay, okay, we'll update that then. Thank you.
Supervisor Henick?
You said we had about 5 million left from the government?
Yes, yep.
Do we, at this point, do we know if we're going to target any of that for our bridges?
I'll let you. That has already been approved through a resolution, so there is, it's all
So there is, it's all for road, well, some is for road construction, but you'd have to look at the ARPA plan that's been approved. That would have been approved back in the March, at the March meeting, the March County Board meeting.
Bridges went because it would take too long to build.
Yes, and unfortunately, bridges would take too long to build because this money has to be spent. That's why we've done a lot of resolutions in March so that that money would be spent by the end of the year. So there will be zero funds left in the American Rescue Act plan.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you. Item C, departmental, department reports, HR division orientation, compensation and benefit up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Toni Foelfelder. For some of you that I haven't had a chance to meet yet, you've been a new board, but I have not been up here very often. And so I apologize in advance. You're going to hear from me a lot through the end of the year. In the past, I have done huge orientation where I've come up here and spent quite a bit of time speaking. Now we're going to break it up a little bit. So tonight I'm just going to focus on our health insurance, our benefits and compensation. So that's what I'm going to present tonight. So let's start.
All right, so first thing I want to talk about tonight is the annual employee wage adjustment. We bring a resolution every August. You'll have one on the agenda for this evening. And the policy directs this. And so it's a across-the-board increase. And a resolution will come to executive committee and then to the county board. The resolution will make a recommendation to the salary schedule. So the salary schedule itself has a min, a control point and a max. So there'll be a, the actual wage schedule will be attached. And then if there's any changes to that schedule. One of the notes that is at the bottom there is just as a reminder, the county board supervisors are also offered a survey at the end of every year. The executive committee does a performance review for the county administrator. They solicit your feedback. So I really highly encourage you, in December, when I send out that email, I'll send several reminders as well if you could complete that so that we can give some feedback to Randy and the executive committee has your feedback. We also ask department heads and some external partners that, that Randy works with to complete that as well. The next slide up here is our market analysis slash comp study. So the little, first of all, the policy is written there. I'm not going to go through the policy, but in red you'll see that we are required per policy to go through a market analysis at least every four years. The very bottom of that, you'll see the dates of when we did do one. A history though is the, the current schedule or the schedule was created in 2013. A full compensation study was done by McGrath HR Group at that time. And then since then, we've done, you'll see all the different years that we've done a market study. So we do an evaluation in 2015, 2017, 2019. And then the effective date of those changes based on the evaluation by the, the market analysis was in the even years, 2016, 2018 and 2020. You'll see on the right side there that we skipped in 2021 and that was intentional because of COVID. We did not budget and, and make any changes. So that was the only time since I've been with the county that we've only, that we went for four years. And so we did skip. Then in 2023, we went out to bid and had a different, actually the year before that, we went out to bid for a new comp consultant and it was Carlson Detman. And so they offered, or they did a complete comprehensive study. So the difference between the two, and I, I do, I did get this question quite a bit even from employees, is market analysis is you're just looking at the market data within a grid that's already been created. A full compensation wage study is actually creating your grid. You're, you're using experts that have the percentages. They build the actual structure of your salary schedule. So you'll have a control point. And then you're going to create your mins and your maxes based on kind of what's out there in the market. And then they also do a market study on top of that. So we're doing an evaluation on all of the skills needed for the position, education, experience and all of that data to create the schedule and then comparing it to the market. And so it's much more comprehensive. It costs more money. So that's why we don't do it every two years or every four years. Typically you'll see it for organizations about every 10 years, which happens to be when we did it. So it was about 10 years from, from the time that we did the very first one. So up next would be us in 2025. We have it budgeted to do the study, but the actual effects of whatever that market analysis would result in would be recommended for January of 2026. Any questions on market analysis or comp study?
Yeah, I guess because I'm kind of new and I don't understand it. So it's not, so your, your raises aren't performance-based, I guess. They're just, they are what they are?
Correct. Just as some history, when I started with the county in 2015, they were just beginning to do a performance-based, performance reviews. We moved away from that in 2018, was it 2019? 2018, 2019 to across-the-board increases. So yes, everybody gets the same increase.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right, so the next several slides.
Supervisor Henick.
What's the advantage of the non-performance raises?
Want to talk through?
So when I got here in 2018, they had performance, what was it called? Pay for performance, it was called. Evaluation system and you get certain payments depending on how you do. I didn't know if I liked it or not when I got here. I kind of waited a year, so it must've been like 2019 or '20 when we switched. And it really didn't work. It worked, may work in the private sector, but here when everybody knows what you do and how much you get paid. And the other thing is, in the private sector, you have control over all your managers. Here you do not. We, nobody knows how somebody works besides another employee. And when an employee gets more than what most employees think they should get, it causes a lot of hard feelings. So I really felt like it didn't work. So I went into the employee engagement, all the stuff that you currently hearing us do, and to train our managers. So I wanted to train our managers to manage people up or out. If you can't perform, then you can't work here. So we spent a lot of time on that leadership training, mostly at the department head level, but that's really the mechanism we went with. I knew several counties that were either doing pay for performance or going towards it. And I knew their highway commissioner, so I'd call them and say, how's it working? They're saying, well, if I don't want somebody to work here, I just give them no raise and then they leave. They don't manage them. They just get them out because they're not getting any more money. And I didn't think that was a good way to manage. So that's the reason I did it. I, it, in theory, it sounds great and it sounds like it would work. And it, I'm sure it does in the private sector, but the public sector, I just didn't see that here.
Follow-up question. Are we losing employees because of that or keeping them because of that?
I don't know. I've never heard anybody be upset about it going away, I guess. I mean, do you know that? Okay, yeah, I don't know.
I think I could speak to it probably personally. Because when I started, one of the reasons I came to the county was because we had pay for performance. And so Randy and I have had a lot of good discussions about this. And I mean, one day I remember him asking me, so if you didn't get it, would you leave? And of course, the answer is no. Or if I didn't get it, would I not perform? And no, I mean, I, I perform because of my character or, you know, people perform because of their work ethic. And so we do hear in our surveys that people want to be rewarded for their performance. We never, I, I've never heard of somebody exiting because they don't have pay for performance. I think, I think there's still some desire out there. There are still people who are high performers that would love to be paid more because of that. But then it becomes the subjectivity, which is what I really do believe. There's subjectivity in who is high performer and who isn't. And so that tends to come up quite a bit. And then the elected officials. We did have a lot of issues with elected officials giving across-the-board increases regardless of what the policy was. And so that, that was an issue in the county government.
Yeah, because they've, they've talked about in other counties and I've seen it of doing a bell curve. Each department, you have winners, losers and then the middle. Well, if you've got three people and they're all high performers and you're giving someone a low wage because it says that you have to, that doesn't go over well either. So I haven't really heard anything, I guess, in our state surveys. Once in a while you hear something, but nothing, nothing overall about it.
I was asked this question recently. I'm meaning to bring it to you. Have we lost a lot of employees this year or hired a lot of employees? Or is that just a rumor? Based on this money waiver plan?
So we did a huge wage study two years ago and put, what, 1.8? Was it 1.9? Somewhere around there to try and catch up. So we were pretty far behind obviously in our wages. We're still not a high payer. So obviously that's always, people are going, I said, answer all the questions is money. I've heard people tell me. So it's definitely an issue, but we've done a lot of the other things to try and keep people here with the employee engagement, listening to them, changing our policies, our flexibility, all the things we've done over the last three years is to try to prevent that. But Toni may be able to talk about, she normally gives, are you doing that in this slide?
Not doing it here, but I'm preparing. Yeah, so I have a, the next presentation that you're going to hear from me is on the state surveys and all the types of feedback surveys that we get. And in that you'll see that compensation is the lowest. Of all of the questions that we ask, it was rated the lowest. Ironically, it was right after we just did a market analysis and gave everybody lots of raises. Not everybody, but a lot of employees. I mean, there are people who got double-digit raises. So we definitely have employees, we have applicants that are really strong in some areas. There are some that we are still, we do still have some issues with, which is why you do a market analysis every couple of years to try and right-size that. So then the next presentation that I'll be giving in October, November-ish will be kind of a general overview of HR, but it'll also have tons of turnover data. So you're going to see some of the turnover data since 2011, all the way up till today in a large chart and then some very drilled down detailed ones from '22 and '23. So I'll have that information for you as well. I still working on some of that, so I don't have that right off the top of my head this year.
All right, any questions on wages before I move on to?
Supervisor Gary.
Chairman, so kind of on the thought process that you two gentlemen had. We had this discussion during the executive meeting and I'm going to share some of that with you now. It was explained to me afterwards and I think it might help you understand this more. So my feeling, I've worked under both, both systems. And my feeling was with the system that's in place now, the gap between the low and the high keeps getting bigger. And I understand that and I don't have a problem with that per se. My thought was that every however many number of years, there should be an adjustment of that or that gap is going to continue to grow. Now they had an answer for that for me. I don't, do you remember that discussion?
I do. One of the things that is, is built into the schedule. And so it's hard, I don't have a schedule. I think there might be one on, in the agenda. But when you look at the min and the max, so the control point, which is the middle of the top grade, say grade one, it's a, it's a, it's a value. And then you'll have a percentage spread from the mid to max. There's also a percentage, a percentage spread between grade one to grade two. And then that formula builds throughout. It's not identical on the schedule. It's, it's, it's lower on the top for that exact reason, so that you don't have that spread. So that's where it tightens. And so it, it helps, just the structure of the schedule and the percentages and how the formulas work help to fight against some of what you're saying. And then I can't, I don't recall what the exact answer was you provided last time.
Just the fact that we do the market analysis every two years to try and.
Yes.
There are spreads and there are issues with internal equity and all that.
So does that help?
After Randy explained it, I.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, so I'll, I'll start focusing on benefits. And so the first slide up here is kind of looking backwards. In 2019, we did make a broker change. We went from Associated Financial Group to a company called Hayes Companies, which is now called Brown and Brown. At the time, our agent had changed with Associated Financial Group. We gave the new agent about a year. She was really, you know, she was great. She was a great person, but she just wasn't forward-thinking and we didn't get a lot of good strategic conversations and it became really frustrating. And so we went out to bid, went out to market and we ended up landing with Brown and Brown, who's been a very great strategic partner for us. We added also at that time, we added dental insurance, vision insurance, accident and critical insurance. I would attest this or, or say that this has to do with the fact that our new county administrator came on board and he wanted to offer some of these benefits. A lot of these, all these benefits here in this line are employee-paid for, but there are at least benefits that are available that were not available at that time, prior to that. We've changed our flexible spending account administrator due to some issues, administrative issues. Brown and Brown, along with our HR division, we created some videos. They're called Brain Shark videos. So they're out on our employee portal as well as our external website to give people, employees and applicants a really good in-depth understanding of what our benefits are. Because it really is a great selling point for working at the county. So we put those together. We did a benefit survey in 2020. We also gathered some state survey data in 2021. And then we also did just now in 2024, do another state survey. So I'll have that information at our next meeting. We tested a concierge service, which was free for our employees, where they had an opportunity to contact this service and get some information on their benefits, help them with open enrollment. We tested it, thought that maybe our employees would prefer to talk to somebody other than human resources because maybe they wanted somebody that was independent. What we did find, which was a compliment, they preferred us. So they ended up, this concierge service ended up creating more questions because they just weren't the experts in our plans. And so we ended up moving away, away from that. But it was a creative idea that our broker brought us. We also held some wellness strategic planning meetings to improve our health and accountability as well. So then we get to 2022 to 2024. In January of 2022, we moved from a fully insured health insurance plan with security health plan, which we had been with since 2013, I think, 2012, 2013, to a self-funded plan. And with a self-funded, self-funded plan, you have a third-party administrator who administers all of the claims. And our third-party administrator, their name is Ameribend. We have a preferred provider organization, which is our PPO. It's the network. That's your anthem for preferred. There was some confusion when we first rolled this out. We did have some TPA issues in the beginning, but we really worked through them after the first year. Blue Cross Blue Shield, if you're familiar with them in this area, sometimes doesn't always have a good administrative name. They're very good with the network discounts. So a lot of people go to them because they're really, they have the best discounts in the network, but they aren't great with the administration of claims. And so that's why we went with Ameribend to try and help with that. And it's since 2023, we've had some really good success with them. Our pharmacy benefit manager, PBM, is CareLonRx, CareLon Prescription. And then our Stop Plus captive carrier is Sun Life. Our Sun Life, which is a captive, our carrier, we do go to bid every year for those. We have not gone to bid for our TPA. If we had some administrative issues, we definitely would do that. Some other things then, once you become self-funded, we did a lot of educating with, with the board at the time that we were going about doing this. It does really open a lot of flexibility of cost savings and kind of steerage with employees, offering some different things that you can't really do when you're fully insured. Because when you're fully insured, all the savings that you're going to create by doing those things, you're giving to the health insurance company. Where when you're self-insured, you're giving it back to the county. And so some of those things that we've done are listed up here. Our advanced primary care clinic with reform medicine that started in March of 2023. And we do some direct contracting or incentive pricing. It's with a company called Alethius. They're a care navigator. And so employees are incentivized through a bonus if they go to certain providers that are high-quality, low-cost. And we started that in October of 2023. We also have carve-out insurance to protect our self-funded plan. We did that for, for organ transplants. It was something that the, our broker wanted to do immediately when we went to self-fund it in 2022. But our previous carriers, health plan, wouldn't give us enough data. When we exited with them, they wouldn't give us any claim data so that we could provide to be able to get that. So it took us a year. Unfortunately, in that year, we had a, we did have an organ transplant on our plan. So we do have one that hit our plan, but in the future, we shouldn't have, we should have this protection now. And then also just trying to create some new strategies to help with musculoskeletal. Musculoskeletal, which is MSK, it's your back injuries, your, you know, things that PT can assist. Musculoskeletal, which is MSK, it's your back injuries, your, you know, things that PT can assist with. Trying to offer some strategies for our employees so that they go to PT first before surgery and potentially maybe cortisone shots or those types of things. And so we started a contract with doctors of PT, DPT, here in April. So it's still very new for us. One thing I didn't put up here that Randy wanted me to make sure I mentioned was something called the Samaritan Fund. Last year, we sent out some communication on the Samaritan Fund. It'll be going out again in a week, about a week and a half to our employees for this year. And basically, what it is, is it's an opportunity for employees who already have high-cost claims currently going on at a certain level. We're not going to know about this. Our office is not going to know about this. It's all between Samaritan Fund and the employee who decides to apply. If they apply, they could get free coverage as well as free care, virtually free care. There are several plans out there. Last year, we had four employees who are pre-qualified, sorry, three employees who were pre-qualified for this, and none of them, not employees, three members. So it could have been employees or their dependents, and none of them applied. We did have nine members apply that didn't get care. So it didn't, nothing happened to our plan last year to assist. We're hoping with more communication, the fact that it's our second year, I've tried to educate employees on this. Our Joanna in my office, she works with a lot of our FMLA situations, has a little bit more knowledge. She's going to use those conversations to encourage people to apply. Applying doesn't mean that you have to leave the health plan for Chippewa County. It does mean that you won't get reform medicine and some of those things. So I know that that's kind of a burden on some of our employees, but it could be free healthcare. So if we were to have, we have four this year that are pre-qualified. If any, even if two of them applied, it could bring our rates down, because it's that kind of an impact to your plan. So it would change the actual projection for claims, and it would also change our stop-loss premium. All right. So what's going forward? Other initiatives that we're working on. So we still would like to work on pharmacy plan design and making sure that we're steering people with specialty drugs and going into the generics and just kind of creating some more education in that area. This is where plans across the US are really getting hit. Our broker just told me this today, that one of their partners, one of their clients, they just got hit with a $15 million prescription over the course of two years because of a child on the plan who has leukemia. And it's a new tested drug. It's like hundreds of thousands, taking it three times a week. And so those are the types of things that we're dealing with now in the area of prescriptions. And so we still have a lot to do there to try and talk through that. Similar to the organ transplant carve-out, they want us to have a gene therapy carve-out so that, because that's another risk to our plan, and it can be millions of dollars if somebody needs gene therapy. So trying to get ahead of that before that happens. Surgical bundling opportunities. So if I need to have a hip replacement, not just having it piecemealed, where I have to pay for the hip replacement with the doc and all the other things that go along with it, but having a bundled pricing that includes PT, it includes all the medicine, includes all of those things. So our broker is going to try to work to develop some of those and then steer employees to those. Holding onsite benefit fairs. We did do a little bit of a benefit fair, I would call it, on MLK Day last year, where we encouraged employees to go around and meet departments. They also came up to this room and met HR, and we had all of our providers here so that they could get a chance to meet them and see them face-to-face. So continuing to try to do that. And then some technical tools. We did have our, since the executive committee meeting, we did meet with Reform Medicine and our broker and do a return on investment with Reform Medicine. I don't have that material ready for today, but I think at a future meeting, we'll definitely bring it. But there was a lot of positive return on investment for all these different things that we've been doing. We don't have a lot yet for doctors of PT. And we'll also have a lot more in the years to come, because we can only get one years of data to be able to compare that return on investment. So we'll continue to do that. All right. So next slide is just a benefit overview. So our health insurance, again, is with Ameribend. That's our TPA. And Blue Preferred is our new, is our network. It's a self-funded health plan. The 2024 current high deductible plan is $2,000, $4,000 for the deductible with an HRA that our employees are getting. We have Delta Dental for our dental insurance, ESP for vision. Those are both very common in our market. We are using National Insurance Service for life, long-term and short-term disability. MetLife for accident and critical care insurance. To some of you, that was the old cancer plans. Retirement is with WRS. We also work with Nationwide for deferred compensation for additional retirement options. Flexible spending accounts with Diversified Benefit Group. Our COBRA administration was with Flight HCM, and then, like I said, our broker is Brown and Brown. Any, oh, I have one more, sorry. One more benefits slide. So the timeline. So every, the first quarter of every year, we're constantly looking at claim data. And it's not just first quarter, we're looking at it every month. Every month, I'm holding my breath, hoping that our costs are lower than our premiums. Brown and Brown then provides us some premium estimates in quarter two. It's in May every year. And then we start to get, we tweak it down every month, hopefully down. And then in August, so quarter three, a resolution is brought to the county board to establish the premiums. And it's always based on estimate, because we will never have stop-loss insurance rates locked in until usually late October, early November. And then you'll see here our renewal history. I've been in HR for many years, and I've never, I've never worked for a company that had this low of an increase. We always were in the double digits where I've worked. So this has been a real blessing. So 2016, we had a 0%. You'll see all of those there. 2021, it was 18 originally. We talked SHP down to the 10%. And then you'll see, we've had 0% since then. We'll be talking in the resolution about what it's going to be for this year. It did come in at 15.5% in May. And so we are, we did budget five and a half. So this is a harder year for us, and we'll get into that when I talk a little bit more about the resolution. But we've had really good run with some low percentage increases over the years. Questions on benefits?
I have a suggestion for you. When a veteran's at 50% disability, he has 100% medical. So you may want to look at that as a hiring option for you in the future. And they have community service, so they're sending them to Mayo.
So hiring veterans because of?
If a veteran's at 50% disability, he gets 100% medical. And the way the current system works now, they send him to Mayo or Marshfield instead of taking him to Toma or Minnesota. So you're getting a guy who has better coverage than you have now. That's an advantage to you.
Any questions, comments?
Supervisor Guthman.
Thanks for your presentation. I just want to make a generalized statement in that as you look at the costs that are increasing, especially this particular year, you mentioned some challenges with at least one case that has a need for an organ transplant. And I appreciate the reform medicine, because anytime that you can move from tertiary sick ill care to prevention primary care, we save significantly. We, as in combined public. And I'm just curious if there are other initiatives around public health to support our families and our employees. I have bigger concerns overall for the general population, but in this case, are there other additional discussions besides reform medicine in regard to those types of prevention, health promotional pieces, environmental health, all of those kinds of things that really we're seeing increased cancer rates for children that we never used to ever see? So I'm just wondering if there's even any of those kinds of discussions going on?
Not, not yet. I think we've been really chasing all the, what do you call it, the low-hanging fruit, the things that are the obvious things. One of the things, too, that reform is really focused on is weight loss and just the effects of bringing weight down in any, all of our members, really, and that the positive effects on cancer and all the different things that are out there. And so I definitely think that that's one of the focuses. But no, I've not had any conversations about environmental health, those types of things. But I can definitely make that comment to our broker and see if there's other creative things. They're very creative. I feel like every few months, we're trying to offer something else out to our employees. And I worry that we're burdening our employees, but the feedback has been that they are really enjoying all of these creative things that we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kelly.
Thank you, Chair. Is there chiropractic care coverage, like on this, on your plan, or no?
Yep. Yep, it's not, it's not free like it is for reform medicine. And I know we definitely got that as soon as reform met. Are you going to partner with a chiropractor? And we don't have plans to do that. But it is covered. That's the one thing nice about our plan, is there's things that we're steering people to, but everybody still has choice. So they can still go to Mayo, they can still go to Marshfield, they can go to any doc that they wish, because they're going to be under, you know, that's in the plan, which is a very large plan. But they're going to get steered in better savings at these lower-cost, high-quality providers.
Supervisor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, do we have a monetary safety net? Let's say if we had several employees have catastrophic medical events that were costly?
Yep. So one of the reasons it took us until 2022 to be able to go self-funded, and we didn't do it the minute Randy started with us, was because we needed to build a fund balance and make sure that it was the right decision, obviously. Just being a little jokey there. But our fund balance currently, Lori, is?
No pressure.
We have $3.2 million.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. We also have stop-loss insurance. So we're not fully insured, meaning the county doesn't 100% take on all the risk of all the claims. Once any individual member hits $100,000, we have stop-loss insurance to cover that.
Okay, thank you.
That's another.
Hey, any more questions?
All right, one more slide. New position requests. So just my last kind of orientation update is whenever there's a request for new positions, the annual budget review process is when we do that. So tonight, you're going to see all the new requests for 2025 budget. It's always at the August meeting. We ask that the managers put together, department heads put together a PAC form. They submit their justification to the finance director and the county administrator in May, and they go through some conversations to meet, to find out how we're going to pay for that and what the need is. If the county administrator supports it, then it comes to the committees meeting, the committee of that position. So for example, DHS, the Health and Human Services Committee, then to executive committee, and then to the county board. Mid-year requests are fairly similar, other than the fact that it's not at the same time of the year. It could be any time of the year. And then the start date, if they're through the budget process, it's usually the first of the year. So January 1 of the next year. Mid-year requests, it's going to be upon approval or whatever the resolution states. But that's our normal process for requesting new positions. And all new positions need to come to the county board for full-time and part-time positions. Per policy, Randy does have the ability to hire LTEs or to approve LTEs. Any questions?
Thank you. And move on to item eight, the business items. Before we start the first business item, I'd like to do a procedural update. I've been questioned about someone who would like to abstain from a vote. What's the procedure for doing that? Robert Schrulls kind of addresses it. It has a couple of options and things. We have in our county ordinance how to do that. And it says, "Any member wishing to be excused from voting should make a brief verbal statement of the reason for making the request, and it's made before the calling of the ayes and nays on the question pending." So the procedure I would, I would like to follow on this. For example, we have a resolution. The question pending isn't pending until there's a motion to put it on the floor. So once we're in discussion of any item, any member that would like to be, would abstain from voting, just make that clear, and it asks to state a reason, and that's all we need to do. So once we get into a discussion method on anything we're voting on, any member that has any reason to abstain, just put on the comment list and let us know the reason, and that's what we need. Does that make sense? Answer any questions, the people that had it? Okay, thank you. So item one, resolution 31-24, resolution to establish health insurance plan and costs for 2025.
Resolution number 31-24, resolution to establish health insurance plan funding for 2025, read by title only. All right, so I'll have you start.
We need an emotion.
Oh, sorry.
Laura first. Enter Tina.
Kelly, someone's.
Okay. You have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, you have a motion in a second? A motion to approve? Okay, so yes. Just make clear, your motion is to approve the resolution? Is that the motion?
Yes.
Okay. So you have a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
In your seconds.
Okay. Okay, so you have a motion in a second to approve the resolution. So now. Now we can.
Ready? All right.
Have discussion and.
All right. So in the pack, see the resolution. I'm going to focus a little bit on that first statement of explanation. And so in the second paragraph, it does read that in May, we received our first preliminary early estimate from our broker, which was equal to a 15.5%. Two and a half percent of that is related to medical claims and 20% to the stop-loss. Our claims were up by 64.5% from the same time last year. We sat down, Randy worked with Lori, to try to determine how much we could afford in the 2025 budget. So 5.5% of that 15.5% was built into the department budgets. So when they had their personal position-based budget reports, the PBB reports that everybody brought to all the committees, the health insurance line had those increases built in. So what we have now is if nothing changed, we have about 10% to work, to try to figure out how we're going to handle that. The rate comes down every month. We have since this increase estimate in May, we have had less than the 100% break-even for the month. So it has been good the last several months, but we still have a couple more months to before we are going to be able to lock in with that stop-loss and get that information from our broker. And so we really won't have our final numbers until October, November. But based on what we think is going to happen, is that we're going to have this 10% we're going to need to work with, we are, the team met, and we're recommending in this resolution an increase in six different areas, five areas. And so you'll see there, the first area is the annual deductible of $2,000, $4,000 to go up to $3,000 and $6,000. The second one is an increase in out-of-pocket maximum of $5,010 to $7,014,000. A reduction of the annual health reimbursement account that we deposit for our employees. Employees currently get $6,000, excuse me, $600 per person on the plan, up to four people on the plan, so $2,400, reducing that to 500 with a max of 2,000. A change to the urgent care co-pay from 25 to 75, and emergency room co-pay from 250 to 350, and then increasing tier-two prescriptions from $30 to $45 co-pay, or three from $60 to $75. And all of these changes equal the approximate 10% of what we would need to come in budget-neutral. So when you go through the resolution, it kind of goes through in the whereas statements and explains why, some of the why. You'll see then on the line 109, that's the current 2024 plan. And then line 26 is the be it further resolved, where it does state on graph two, the 2025 recommendation in the resolution. You'll see on line 128, it says by no later than December 10, 2024, the county administrator will provide a report to the county board that provides actual total costs for the county's insurance plan, beginning January 1 for all full-time employees, if the health plan costs are more than what is stated in the financial pact below. So if there is a change, if for some reason we do have some really large claims between now and then that require us to go more or have to start adding an employee premium, we would bring that forward. This resolution. This resolution would make these plan design changes, but leave our premiums still at zero for general municipal employees and then 4% for law enforcement, because that's what's in their contract. We get a lot of positive. It's our selling point when we are doing recruitment, when we are maybe low in wages in a certain area. It is, it's been a really, really positive tool for recruitment and retention. We get a lot of positive feedback on our zero premium and it's, it's pretty rare to see out there. So that's our recommendation. Questions?
Supervisor Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. You may have made reference to this, and I didn't quite understand it or pick up on it. Is there a dollar amount you can assign to that 10%?
For premiums? Like if it was a premium?
10% that you're, you're short of, that, that's changing all of this.
It's. Huh? 800,000? Lori says 800,000. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We're a team.
Supervisor Guthman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has some of this been floated past any employees or in the part of a committee? And you've gotten some feedback? Just wondering what the.
Yep, there's a group of us that definitely talked through this. And then it did get, we did pass, send out this information two and a half, three weeks ago to employees. Randy got one email and I got one email. We, gosh, we, we are educators. We try our hardest to try and teach and educate. And I sent out a video explaining the why. I think originally the first week, there was maybe 17 views. I just looked yesterday, I think, or Monday, which was yesterday. And there was, I think, 73 views. So people are voluntarily going out. And in that video, I go into more detail on why and what they can do about it to help impact the plan for the future.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kirby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In, in the, in the details of the resolution, obviously you're still getting more information as time goes on to adjust from that 15 and a half percent figure. And you mentioned, I think in line 18 or something, where with that new data, that number has now dropped. Assuming that either stays the same or continues to go down, how does that affect these numbers and what happens with that, that money? Assuming everything then stays as the resolution states, what, what, what happens with all of that money then?
So if, if the, if there's enough, say where it's, it's amazing and we are able to take off 3%, 4%, that could mean that, that maybe the new proposal is a plan design change that we bring forward to you and we decide to make a recommendation to not change the HRA and it's, it's still 6,000 or $600 or 2,400. The other option though is to maintain it as is. And then that, that fund balance that she was referring to, it could potentially go to there or we take, you know, there's still a risk. We never know what the true claims are going to be next year.
Yeah, that's, the second point is what I was going to make. She made it so, because we're self-insured, the money's never going outside the county. So if we do, if that fund balance does grow, we can look at that in the future and decide not to make changes that you typically would because you have a fund balance that's, that you want to look at utilizing some of that so the costs don't go out for the county and it doesn't go out for the employees.
Thank you.
Other questions for me?
Okay. No more questions? I guess we'll call the vote on the resolution. Resolution passes. Thank you. Item two, resolution 32-24, resolution to approve tax levy funding for salary adjustments in 2025.
Resolution number 32-24, resolution to approve tax levy funding for salary adjustments in 2025. Now therefore be it resolved that $225,000 of levy funding is hereby approved to be included in the 2025 proposed county budget to be used to cover the costs of the salary schedule adjustments and the across-the-board wage adjustments be effective July 1, 2025, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Entertainer, motion to approve?
Play or so move. Approve. Supervisor Gary in seconds.
You have a motion in a second to approve? And Tony?
All right. So this is the fifth year in a row that we've brought a very similar resolution for the across-the-board increase. You'll see that it is for a, on the, on the statement of explanation, it says that the county administrator will be authorized for a 0 to 3% across-the-board wage adjustment. And the reason for the range is because we don't have all the data in yet. And so it gives some flexibility that it's up to 3%. Over the last five years, it has been 3%. So that's been the goal. That's where the budget usually is able to end. But again, it gives some flexibility to have that 0 to 3 if, if we aren't able to. In addition, a line 14 on the, the statement of explanation talks about a 1% increase to the salary schedule. So there's two salary schedules that are attached to the agenda, the 2024 and then the proposed 2025. The 2025 is a 1% salary schedule adjustment, which is the min, the, and the control point and the max. And then there's also some correction that was made that I wanted to just notify you of because the actual grid, when it came from Carlson Detman, had some errors in the formula. It was literally decimal errors. So if it was 20% instead, it might have had 19.56287. It was like 14 digits in length. And so we identified the error within it. And when I talked to Carlson a couple of weeks ago, they explained that they did a copy and paste and didn't use the rounding feature that was supposed to be in it. And so it kind of made some, some errors. So that has been corrected on this grid as well. So the experts weren't the experts. Any questions for me?
Supervisor Hennig.
You talk a 0 to 3% increase, and then I don't understand this 1%.
So the 0 to 3% would be on an employee's wage. So all the employees would get that. The 1% is to the salary schedule. So I'll use this as a visual. So the current grid that's in there for 2024, it'll be 1% higher for the minimum now. So the schedule itself is moving 1% is what you'd be approving. You'd be approving the 0 to 3, so 3% across the board for employees' actual pay. The only employees that would receive an increase because of the schedule moving would be somebody starting. So someone just started in, you know, February of 2025 and they're at the lower 13.70 cents because they're at grade one. Now they'll go up to 1386. So they'll see a 1% bump.
Okay, now I understand.
Any more questions? Hey, if not, then we will call the vote. In. Approve. Read to disapprove. Resolution 32-24 is approved. Thank you. Item three, resolution 33-24, resolution to create a supervisor position in the Children's Long-Term Support Program in the Department of Human Services.
Resolution number 33-24, resolution to create a supervisor position in the Children's Long-Term Support Program in the Department of Human Services. Now therefore be it resolved that effective January 1, 2025, one full-time supervisor position is hereby created in the Children, Youth and Families Division, Children with Differing Abilities Unit of the Department of Human Services, to provide supervision to workers providing early intervention services to children with special needs. And be it further resolved that this position shall be funded by Medicaid revenue generated by this position. And be it further resolved that should the state and federal funding necessary to fund this position no longer be available or be reduced significantly, this position may be eliminated, eliminated by the county administrator, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Entertainer, motion to approve? You have a motion in a second to approve? Discussion.
All righty. The Children's Long-Term Support Program. This is for children who have a physical or developmental disability. Mental health is covered by the CCS program, Comprehensive Community Services. So these are all these kids under 18 years of age that have an institutional level of care. So in years past, it's also CLTS, Children's Long-Term Support is also called the waiver because back in the seventies, these were kids that were served in institutions and you had to get a waiver if you were going to serve them in the home. And what we found is that these kids grew up to be productive, loving members of their families, very, very, they become an engaged part of society when they're with their families. That's where they should be. They should be with their families. They should be with their brothers and sisters, not in institution. And that's what this program allows. It's the Home and Community-Based Waiver Program. So this is a little higher caseload. We typically have 35 or so kids on each caseload. And they'll provide things such as, it's, it's a lot of support, any type of adaptive aids that they need to live in the home. It can be a van modification. It can be a van lift. It can be bathrooms to accommodate kids with wheelchairs. They've done some other kids to allow kids to participate in hunting with their families, some type of adaptive type things, fishing, things like that, so they can become a part of that family. And what we're looking at here is that Kyra Seacrow right now, she is the manager who covers youth justice, CCS, as well as Children's Long-Term Support. We need somebody that can really focus. We need a supervisor who can focus. And typically, we look at a one to eight ratio of supervisor to worker ratio in human services. It's a pretty intensive, intensive, intensive setup there because we're also looking at, not only do they have those eight workers, but then they're dealing with those 35 to 40 kids that, that those workers have on their caseload as well. So we're looking at that 116. So I want Kyra to have a supervisor under her to manage this program specifically. Additionally, right now, we have a waitlist. We're not allowed to have a waitlist. So beginning in 2025, I anticipate we're going to be put on a performance improvement plan, which we're going to be able to meet. We have, we have four positions right now that we're looking to fill that this board authorized last year. So we fill them as we need them. The need is there now, so we're going to be filling them. I think it's one CLTS, Children's Long-Term Support, and three CCS. Not the muddy of the water, but Children's Long-Term Support provides the respite portion for Comprehensive Community Services. And respite is really important for kids with special, parents with special needs. It gives them a break, you know, so that they can go off and do some other things, maybe participate in other activities as well while that child is with a respite provider. So that's, so Children's Long-Term Pay pays for that as well. But the main crux of this program is for kids with physical disabilities, developmental disabilities.
Supervisor Gary.
I have two questions. First of all, do you have an average length of time per caseload, per case?
These kids are going to stay on for, it's Children's Long-Term Support, so they'll be on the rest of their life. And typically, these kids end up transitioning into the MCO world as adults, to a managed care organization. That's going to help. Either the family can either go through IRIS or they're going to be, because these, these are, these disabilities last forever. It's not like CCS where we can assist a person in, in, in managing their own recovery. These are, these are individuals that are going to need some support the rest of their lives.
Which answers my second part of my question. Does it go beyond age to 18? So.
Yep. That would, and then that transitions, it transitions to family care. This is a fully funded Medicaid program as well, I should add.
Thank you.
You bet.
Supervisor Hennig.
I have a number of questions. This supervisor is supervising just your staff and not in the field at all?
Well, they go with the workers as well, sure. They'll, they'll, they'll go with them, especially on some difficult cases. They'll accompany them on home visits. Yes. So that's, that's kind of how they get a handle on how their workers are doing?
I heard that it's fully funded, but if in case it doesn't, Randy has the choice of keeping them or not? Who picks up the bill when, if Medicaid fails to fund it at some point?
Well, this program in the past was not fully funded. It was a 60-40 Medicaid program. So there was a portion of levy. We used some other grants that were received from DHS. I don't see the funding ever going away. There's no talk whatsoever. In fact, they're talking about continuing to add more funding and do away with the maintenance of effort that some counties have to pay as well to make it a truly funded, fully funded program for all counties. If it goes away, hopefully it would go to the 60-40 program. If it goes away entirely, the funding, that's a good question. Kids will probably end up going back to institutions.
But would you bring it back to the board?
If, if there's, okay, yeah, that's probably a Randy question.
Yeah. So anything, if, if something like that would happen, we wouldn't have the funding, it'd come through the budget process. So we'd inform you that there's no money available. You can make decisions on cutting how much you're giving highway and to fund this position, something like that, any of the positions. But it's really based on the funding and grants. We do the same thing with grants and that, that sort of thing too. So there's just not, levy's just so difficult to come up with for any additional positions.
The only reason I ask Randy is there's possible changes after January. Don't know the future.
Yep, that's why we put that in there, because we don't know the future.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Not, then I will call the vote on resolution 33-24. Green button for approval. Red. Release. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Item four is resolution 34-24, resolution to create a supervisor position in the Department of Human Services to provide supervision in the Children's Comprehensive Community Services Program.
Resolution number 34-24, resolution to create a supervisor position in the Department of Human Services to provide supervision in the Children's Comprehensive Community Services Program. Now therefore be it resolved that effective January 1, 2025, one full-time supervisor position in the Children, Youth and Families Division, Children with Differing, Differing Abilities Unit of the Department of Human Services is hereby created to provide supervision to workers providing comprehensive community services to children. And be it further resolved that this position shall be funded by using the Medicaid revenue generated by the position as well as the CCS reconciliation process. And be it further resolved that should the state and federal funding necessary to fund this position no longer be available or be reduced significantly, this position may be eliminated by the county administrator, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
As a preface, CCS is the.
Motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Entertainer, motion to approve. There's a motion to approve in a second. Now.
All righty.
Procedure.
Comprehensive Community Services, this is how we serve individuals with substance abuse or, and/or mental health problem issues, I should say. This is a birth-to-death program. It's Medicaid. It's a social program. So what we're doing is we're trying to engage the individual so that they're able to manage their, their substance use, their mental illness as they, as they go on in life. We provide a variety. I think there's 11 service arrays. Right now, as I previously mentioned, we're at 1 to 12. We're going to hire four more CCS workers, which will put us at that 1 to 16 ratio. We have one clinician, remember that one, because that's coming up, and we have one supervisor as well. So we're going to be at that 1 to 16 beginning in, well, it'll be this year. But in January, we'd like to be able to bump that up. This is another one of those programs. This is, it's a pretty intensive team-related program where that supervisor has a lot of say of what's going on and managing these cases. I think it's really important too, because it helps move cases along. It helps, we don't want kids to languish on these programs forever. We want them to be able to, to go on, and that's, that's part of the benefit of that as well. We've got about 4.5 children qualifying each month for CCS still. That's each month that's coming in. It's slowing down. You know, we're going to hit that sweet spot eventually where the transitions off are going to equal the number coming on, but we're not quite there yet. We're seeing it across our entire region right now where it's slowing down a little bit. I think at one point, we were up to seven kids per month that were coming onto the program. There's a need, you know, for this program. There's no doubt about it. And the beauty of this program is that it prolongs placements. It sometimes stops them from ever happening or prolongs placements. And placements are what we're paying, we're using levy money. So what we had, we had a nice presentation that supervisor did probably two, three years ago that showed with a handful of kids how we saved over a million dollars on prolonged placements. You know, was it a perfect presentation, but it gave you a pretty good idea of, of the, of the benefits of this program. Stopping the kids from going in those out-of-state placements, 20,000 plus a month. So this is in there. Right now, we've only got, you know, two kids in residential. One's nine years old and one's 10 years, years old. And we're at the point where we went from a year ago, we were 1.3 million over budget. We were looking at 1.1 under budget this year. But that's the great work done by not just them, but youth justice, child protective services and so forth. So this is, this is, this is a, this is a. So this is, this is, this is a, this is a really good program. We were never able to serve these individuals before with the substance use and mental health. They were on a revolving door type thing where they were going to Winnebago, getting released, going back to Winnebago, hospitalization. So this really allows us to, to serve folks in a, in a great way.
Any questions? Okay, then we'll call the vote. Green to approve. Red to disapprove. Resolution passes. So item five, resolution thirty-five dash twenty-four. Resolution to create a clinical position in the Recovery and Wellness Consortium of the Department of Human Services to provide clinical supervision for Children's Comprehensive Community Services.
Resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-four. Resolution to create a clinician position in the Recovery and Wellness Consortium of the Department of Human Services to provide clinical supervision for Children's Comprehensive Community Services. Now therefore be it resolved that effective January one, two thousand and twenty-five, one full-time clinician position is hereby created in the Recovery and Wellness Consortium Division of the Department of Human Services to provide clinical services for the Children's CCS Program. And be it further resolved that this position shall be funded by using the Medicaid revenue generated by the position, as well as funding from the CCS reconciliation process. And be it further resolved that should the state and federal funding necessary to fund this position no longer be available or be reduced significantly, this position may be eliminated by the county administrator, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Entertained a motion to approve. You find approved? We have a motion in a second to approve.
The, the whole point of these positions is to shore up our, our, our support and the logistical system of these programs to be able to support the increased workers that's coming. That's one of the things I forgot to say previously, but, so the clinician portion of this Comprehensive Community Service Program is a, is a real key pin to this whole program, to the team. Because what they're doing is they're, they're, they're stab, they're, they're going over the mental status exam, they're doing the diagnosis, they're working with those service facilitators on the individual plans themselves to make sure that they're clinically appropriate, which is important when this is a Medicaid-funded program, because we don't want to end up, you know, having paybacks or having quality assurance catch things. We also have, right now, we have only one clinician. They're not able to do everything that we really wanted them to. They're checking boxes, they're doing their mental status exams, but we'd like them to be able to do more by going out to meet with some of these kids, some of the more difficult kids with the workers, eyeball what's going on in the home, maybe provide some more clinical suggestions on what can better move these kids along. And again, it's the same thing with that one, one-to-eight ratio where we want to keep it at. Clinician, they're typically a licensed clinical social worker or a licensed professional counselor, so they've got that little extra level of, and, and those are typically your mental health therapists as well, that, that we hire for this position.
Any questions? Call the vote on this resolution then? The resolution is passed.
Very much. I just wanted to touch base too, real quickly, on something that was talked about before, about the hiring of staff, whether or not we're losing staff. We're one of the larger departments. I came here in two thousand and ten, came from the private sector. We had a rough go of it around two thousand and eighteen, when things were going. I'll tell you what, over the last year or two, with the wage increases, we have, in my director's meeting for the Western Region, there's a standing item on about how do we hire staff? How do we recruit and retain staff? I feel bad, because I don't have that problem. We had forty individuals apply for the ADRC position. We had sixteen social workers apply for this last group, and we're, we're pilfering seasoned, experienced staff from other counties that are even paid more. So I think the, the word is out about, and that's what people are talking about, is about Chippewa County. They're talking about the benefits, they're talking about the increased pay, they're talking about the support. And what can you as a board do is, it's, one thing we see on, in these, in these reviews always, is that they want the support of the board. They would love for you to come through the department. I know a supervisor gave an attaboy probably about a month ago on something that occurred. Our staff will run through a brick wall for you. You know, and the one thing we know is that pay per performance, and I will, I will, I will stand by Randy on that damn pink. If you ever get the, get a chance, look at the book drive. He's proved over and over again that pay for performance does not increase productivity. Now, certain professions, yeah, in line, in, in peacework, if you say I want fifty widgets, for every widget over fifty, you're gonna, you're gonna end up getting, you're gonna get paid more. But that's what I just want to say, is that we really appreciate everything you're doing, and, and if you can swing by and tell them good job, or swing by for the day in the life that DHS always has, they'd love to have, have you stop by. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim. Item six, resolution thirty-six dash twenty-four. Resolution to, to deny claims of Rolling Hills Equine Incorporated.
Resolution number thirty-six dash twenty-four. Resolution to disallow claims of Rolling Hills Equine, Inc. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby disallow the claims of Rolling Hills Equine, Inc., E. one-four-seven-five, seven-hundred-ninety Avenue, Knapp, Wisconsin, five-four-seven-four-nine, filed on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four by Attorney Sean Sweeney, Hailing, and K. O., three-twenty Buffalo Street, Suite seven hundred, Milwaukee, Wisconsin, five-four, oh, five-three-two-zero-two. And no action on this claim may be brought against Chippewa County or any of its offices, officials, agents, or employees after six months from the date of service of this notice pursuant to statute eight-hundred-ninety-three-point-eight-zero. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the claimant and claimants counsel by certified mail. Return receipt requested as notice of disallowance and forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
We had a closed session back, I think on June twelfth, if my memory's correct. And I told you that at that time, there would be some resolutions coming forward, probably in August, to deny the claims. We ran this past our, not only our legal counsel, but also our insurance company. They both recommend that these claims be denied. And as I told you back then, it's simply what that does is it shortens up their time period in order to file a claim. So instead of having normal three- or four-year statute limitations, depending on what they're filing, they now have six months. And this, this law was passed to assist municipalities essentially not having litigation hanging, potential for litigation hanging out there. So this doesn't, this does not do anything with their claim. It just tells them, if you're going to file a claim, you have to do it within six months. And then we'll determine whether or not they determine to file. We are still in, we're in contact with both, both parties, and that's about all I can really say at this point. But this is the same on both resolutions. So we're asking that you request, that you grant this resolution to deny the claim, and then at that point, gives both this entity and the next entity six months to file. Anybody have any questions, or me? And it's the same explanation for the second resolution. It's right after this, so I won't, I won't come up here again.
If there are no more questions, we will call a vote on resolution thirty-six dash twenty-four. Release. Resolution is passed. Now, under item seven, resolution thirty-seven dash twenty-four. Resolution to deny claims of Carlson Consultants, We Adapt.
Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-four. Resolution to disallow claims of Carlson Consultants, We Adapt. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chippewa County Board of Supervisors does hereby disallow the claim of Carlson Consultants, We Adapt, twenty-two-twelve Elton Avenue, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, five-four-seven-zero-one, filed by Attorney Joshua Wilson, thirty-one-thirty-seven, Gateway Drive, number six, Eau Claire, Wisconsin, five-four-seven-zero-one. And no action on this claim may be brought against Chippewa County or any of its offices, officials, agents, or employees after six months from the date of service of this notice pursuant to statute eight-ninety-three-point-eight-zero. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the claimant and claimants counsel by certified mail. Return receipt requested as notice of disallowance and forwarded to the county board by the executive.
Entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
Supervisor Lottz moves.
Any second.
Say, like, you should think. So just a minute. We have a motion in a second, so now the item's on the floor.
Supervisor would like to speak?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would like to say that I plan to abstain from this discussion and vote in regard to this particular entity, based upon some of my knowledge and working relationships that I've had.
Okay, thank you. So noted. Any more questions or discussion on this? Supervisor Roth.
I have a similar problem with that attorney. I am, I'm a real, real attorney. I have an ongoing negotiations with him on a property, so I'm assuming I have to abstain.
It's, it's your judgment call, whether you.
That's your judgment.
It's, it's up to you, judgment.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so noted. Any other questions or comments? I think we will call the vote then?
If you're abstaining, it's the yellow button. Doesn't happen often.
So we have the record. Here we go. Okay, please the vote. Okay, the resolution passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance dash twenty-four. Ordinance to amend section two, three of chapter two to undesignate an official newspaper.
All right, so this. It's first reading. So we are going to ask someone to waive the second reading for this. I'll explain why, but I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up on that. So counties are not required by law, but if they do designate an official newspaper, then we have to un, you have to use that newspaper if you're going to do your official notices. Chippewa County has a designated newspaper, Chippewa Herald. We've had several issues with the newspaper last year. Unfortunately, we ended up having to reschedule our budget hearing. Jackie put the notice on in time. There wasn't, shouldn't have been any issues with it, said it was going to be in there, wasn't in there. I think he even had another week to do it. Wasn't in there again, and could not get them to put it in. And unfortunately, nobody owns newspapers locally anymore, so nobody listens to you. So at that time, we really, the discussion was to go away from having an official newspaper. A lot of people don't use the newspaper, obviously, and there's other ways to inform the public. So that's what we're recommending to do, is to do away with the official notice, official notice of the newspaper, and then the requirements, as you can see under, it basically says otherwise required by law. You, we'd have to post it. And there are several departments that it is required by law. So we had to work through that. We thought this was going to be a pretty simple solution. But once we got into zoning, land conservation, forest management, there was some approvals from DNR we needed, zoning needed some, go talk to the towns. So it became kind of a long, drawn-out process. This is for chapter two, and this will solve our problem for the budget hearing, but there will be additional ordinances coming forward. Doug's bringing them through, I think, land conservation, or they bring them, planning, zoning? And what? Oh, legal law, yeah, I'm sorry. So you will see those come. We are asking you to waive the second reading, because we do not want to get put in the same pinch that we were this time, where they wouldn't post, they wouldn't advertise our budget hearing, which is a problem. So that, that's what, the purpose of this, and kind of the bigger picture that we've been kind of dealing with over the last year. Any questions?
How are you going to notify people?
We have it spelled out here. So unless otherwise required by law, notice shall be posted pursuant to nine-eighty-five-point-oh-two on the notice board located on the first floor of the county courthouse, and placed electronically on the county official website. And you can do more, too, because there will be situations that we run into. If a county board member decides to step down, it doesn't make much sense to put the advertising in the Herald if it's from Blumer. But we can still utilize additional, but we have to do this as a minimum.
Any more questions, Randy? Entertain a motion to waive the first reading?
Hot seconds.
Waive the second reading?
Yeah, waive the second.
Sorry, sorry, waive the second reading.
What was the motion? And then hot second?
This, this requires a two-thirds vote of the members. Any discussion or questions about waiving the second reading? When the screen comes up, we will take the, call the vote on waiving, waiving the second reading. Hey, can release? Hey, it's unanimous. Second reading is waived. Entertain a motion to approve the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we will call the vote to approve the ordinance. The ordinance is approved. Thank you. Item nine, county board chair appointments, there are none. Item ten, county administrator appointments, there are none. Item eleven, agenda items for future consideration. Just know if you have anything. Onto item twelve.
Erickson makes a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn. Register your vote, please.